It's behind schedule. What I would like to do for this portion of the work day is to actually try to get this portion done by about 3:30. So we're going to try to catch up some timing. And if need be, we will carry it over a little bit more. But what I would like to do is hand it over for a presentation to staff. And then we're going to go back to the three-minute rule on people providing comments so that we can facilitate the discussion. Thank you.
Okay, so, thank you, Madam Chair.
One moment, I have one question from... Okay. So, Mr. Smith?
Okay.
The mic's yours.
Thank you very much. So, we are here today to go through our strategic plan prioritization process. I had the opportunity to present to the board on Thursday, highlights from the plan. And what I do want to do today, and let me back up just a bit. We did provide the board with this particular worksheet over the past few weeks. We provided you the initial baseline information. And then the following week, we provided you an update with our updated targets. I do want to note that unless it says that the area is under development, we will have data to update those particular areas within the strategic plan. What I could recommend is that if we don't have those baseline and target datas input into the plan by the time we vote, then we can bring back those blank areas for the board's consideration at another time. And again, we haven't had a chance to discuss that. We have many data requests in that we're working on, and so trying to get those through. We'll add that data in just a bit. But what I do want to do, we didn't have a chance to at least read all of our aspirational statements at the last board meeting. And so, I want to take the opportunity to do that. And then as we go through by goal area, if board members have questions about the goal statements, if they have questions about the data that we've attached for targets and/or baselines, we would certainly be able to answer those questions. We have our dream team here at the table, all of our champions for our areas, who are here to answer any questions that board members might have. And I do know that we did receive one question about some of our diversity data, and so we'll be able to answer that question. Mr. Moon prefaced that in some of his comments at the board table on Thursday, so we will be able to answer some questions around diversity. But to get started, I would like to just go to page two of our document that highlights all of our aspirational statements. And we do this not only for the board, but we do it for the community who's watching. If you look at our four goal areas, we of course have student success, caring culture, premier workforce and resource stewardship. Our first area around student success, of course, we commit to reach, challenge, and prepare every student for success in school and life. We talk about those desired outcomes and the what. And for this particular what, it's that we will eliminate gaps in opportunity, access, and achievement for all students. The how we're going to do that is to transform our current practices to ensure that all students achieve academic excellence through staff use of the closing the achievement gap framework. So we have a variety of aspirational statements here. And we've broken those up into a few different areas. And so, we have a section where we talk about what we hope and want all students to be able to do, and then we talk about participation rates. And so, in terms of our success, we'll know that we're successful when, that all students will be successful in reading and mathematics. And we can later, we won't click to that area yet. We want all students to be college or career-ready by graduation. We want them to graduate on time. We want them to have a plan for college or career after high school. We want them to have access to an individual computer or tablet consistent with one Fairfax's policy of digital access for all residents. And we want our students to demonstrate English proficiency. We also got some feedback for the board around participation rates. And when we look at certain groups having access and ensuring that we have high participation rates across those groups, we want those participation rates to be similarly high across all of our student groups with regard to our advanced academic programs, our Algebra One by eighth grade, our honors courses, and our AP and IB courses. So, we'll have an opportunity to answer any questions that board members may have had after doing their homework on those areas. But I would like to go through all of student success before we then go into caring culture. If we go to page three, you can see that the what is that we want all future FCPs families to access high-quality learning experiences. And I know that we've had some questions about what we have control over as a system and what we don't have control over. And so, for those families who are going to access those resources on their own, we're very glad for that. And so, the what for us is that we want them, all of our families, to have access to those high-quality learning experiences. And for those who don't access those on their own, then we would want to be able to provide those as a school system. And so, the how is we're going to enhance our partnership with families and the county government to ensure that our young children are ready for kindergarten using the Fairfax County Equitable School Readiness Plan. And we'll know that we're successful when all of our future students enter kindergarten with the essential skills needed for school success. And then, the last area here in student success is the what is that all of our FCPs pre-K students will continuously progress in the development of portrait of a graduate attributes. The how for that is that we're going to increase student opportunities to apply portrait of a graduate skills to real-world problems through the teacher use of the learning model. And we'll know that we're successful when our students receive a passing grade on independent end-of-year research projects or capstone projects. So those are all of our aspirational statements for student success. We've outlined the what, we've outlined the how, and we've outlined how we'll be successful. And so, we want to give board members an opportunity to look at the baseline data and targets. And again, we've provided that homework for you to do that. And we're here to answer any questions that you might have about the baseline data and the targets that we've provided up to this point for student success. So with that, we can go to page seven and certainly take questions that board members might have about any areas in student success before moving on to the next...
So Mara, you wanting to do it? You want to do it?
I'd like to do a stop.
Category by category?
There's a lot of information for us to go through each one. And so, I'd like to do a stop here at student success and then answer any questions that we might have about student success.
Great. I have Ms. Hines, followed by Mr. Moon, and then Ms. Schultz.
Thank you very much. So my only question on this is, and I just don't know where this belongs, but one of the, let me make sure I get back to the right slide, where it's the slide where we have highlighted the closing the achievement gap framework?
On slide two, page two?
Page two, okay. So...
Are you referring to the document or the slide presentation from Thursday night?
Slide presentation.
Okay, so we might want to bring that one up as well?
I'm sorry.
That's okay, no apologies necessary.
Yeah, I think it's on page eight of the slide presentation, slide eight? Am I right? Yes, okay, so, thank you. That's under how, right, for closing achievement gaps. We have the hyperlink to the closing the achievement gap framework, which is great. What I'm wondering is, where is, where is project momentum in all of this? And why are we not highlighting project momentum as part of how we are closing achievement gaps? Because I think, we all think it's working to close achievement gaps, so I wonder why we're not highlighting it here.
But we certainly could do that. I would say in the streamlined strategic plan, from my perspective, what we've chosen at least in student success to do is be a little bit broader as opposed to the litany of all of the supports and strategies that would be included. So when you think about this, closing the achievement gap framework, there are six different drivers. One of those drivers is academic support. And the office of OSS, the Office of School Support, provides a lot of direct resources to schools to address gaps primarily in literacy and math. And we'll continue to provide a lot of those supports. But what we're really surfacing here is the need to take more of a holistic approach to closing gaps. So while we're going to continue those efforts that have been successful with the Office of School Support and other departments, central office departments, really collaborating to provide those supports to schools, we know that we need to do other work as well. So family and community engagement is one of the drivers in the CAG framework. We know that we really need to expand our efforts there. Another driver, for example, is relationships and the work that we talk about with cultural responsiveness and building and strengthening relationships in all of our classrooms is really important. So that's a driver in the CAG framework. So really what we're doing here is choosing to focus more kind of broadly and holistically around the CAG framework as opposed to discussing all of the specific supports and actions and strategies that would be contained underneath that umbrella of the CAG framework.
All right, thank you. So I can see why we want to keep it this slim in this document here. But as I look at the link to the website with the closing achievement gap formula, I see academic support, and it's the first category under drivers, goals, and approaches. And I don't know, I just, I don't know if this is appropriate for this conversation because it's less about the strategic plan maybe. But I, I don't know, I wonder if we couldn't add project momentum somehow in this description on the website of academic support?
Well, I think, I think the timing actually is really good to bring this up. So we're in the process right now at the leadership team level of looking at the closing the achievement gap framework and making revisions and making edits. We've got three entire meetings really kind of devoted to that. So we're going to have our second conversation of those, that three-part conversation tomorrow. And that's one of the things that we definitely can include in terms of revisions and updates.
Okay, I guess I would suggest that, only because as I talk to the community about how we're doing it, I always bring up project momentum because we have great data on it. It does seem to be moving the needle for a lot of kids.
And it's a big piece of the work, so. What you're looking at when you link to that website, that has not been updated in a couple years. So I mean, it's time to update it, it's time to refresh it, and make sure that it's reflecting a lot of our current work.
Okay, thank you.
And I will add, Ms. Hines, that once we have approval from the board to move forward, the strategic plan website will have a variety of resources. And so, we'll include links to other things that we're doing to support student success.
Thank you. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few questions. On page 10, page 10, when you talk about participation rates in advanced academic programs, would you define advanced academic programs for me, someone, whether doctor procedure or...
So the advanced academic programs that were included here were all programs that serve our Level Four students?
Level Four, this is Level Four then?
But it also includes our Young Scholars program as well. So in both cases, it's going to span not just the AAP centers, but any of the advanced academic program services that students receive.
Okay. Because I see for one particular subcategory, I see maintenance, maintain as a target. And I want to, I want to put that, I want to compare that to, I want to compare that to what's on pages seven and what's on page eight, where even with a very high percentage, for example, on-time graduation rates and pass rates on reading as well and math as well, certain categories, we want them to go even higher, but not necessarily for advanced academic program. Could you let me know what the distinctions are?
I can talk a little bit about it, and then I'm sure other people want to chime in as well. So when Mr. Smith was talking about the different kinds of aspirational statements that we have, some of those statements are specifically "all students will." And so, for those, we're continuing to want all of our students to get to 100%, and that's what you see on those pages seven and eight. But in some cases, we're asking that the participation rates for different subgroups be the same. And so, in those cases, and these tend to be our advanced kinds of metrics, so things like advanced academic programs or taking Algebra One in eighth grade. So in those kinds of statements, we were looking more to ensure that all of our subgroups were at the same high level. Because we don't necessarily expect all of our students to want to do some of those things, but we would expect the subgroups to be similar across all of the subgroups.
I'm not sure that I will agree with you, but I understand what you're saying. Let me go to page number nine, about percent of students with access to an individual computer or tablet. We don't have a three-year baseline, but we do have a targets. How could we have targets without baseline? I wondered about that.
And that's a very good point. And maybe we should have pulled these. These are our best estimates for what the targets probably are likely to be. But we know that the school board just recently voted on expanding into the high school level, so we don't yet have the baselines for that. So we're going to go ahead and probably update those, but it was our best guess given what we understood with the baseline previously.
So when you have a percent of students with access to an individual computer and tablet, are you only focusing on what the school system is going to be providing versus what the students may already have at home or through somebody else?
So our measure...
Because I, I'm asking those questions, when I saw target percentage, that seems to be very, very low.
So our measure for this right now, we're the schools that were participating in either FCPs ON or the Backpack Program. So it is ones that parents can still opt out of that if they already have the one-to-one device, but that we were counting as schools and students who had it, those who were in either FCPs ON already or participating in Backpack. So many, there may be other students that we have, but we, who have it at home from their own resources, but this was focused on FCPs ON.
My question is this, my question is this. First of all, without three-year baseline, you know, having target doesn't make any sense. You know, secondly, how you define, how you're going to define the percent of students with access this way? I do not know whether I agree with that approach. If the, if the bottom line, the target is this low, I'm going to have to answer a lot of questions from public that, I mean, these numbers surprise me, and these numbers will surprise a lot of people and ask us questions that Fairfax County Public School Systems' target is already slow?
The target was based on the fact that you all have only approved high school so far. So once you approve the continuation to middle school, then we'll up the target.
It may come down to the definition of access, whether that is, you are only counting what school system is providing as access versus whether they are already being provided through home or some other, some other means.
Right, right. Can I just say, the language there, what Mr. Moon is saying is with FCPS access to an individual computer or tablet, instead of just overall getting at an access number through the U.S.A.
FCPS provided access. That's maybe a different story, but again, by surprise, even late last night, reading through this, I said, whoa, woke me up. That's why I didn't get sleep last night.
But we can, we can certainly make that change so that we talk about those FCPS provided access.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Schultz, please, followed by Ms. Keys, Gamara.
I'm glad you brought that up because this is, I mean, I try not to get frustrated when it comes to numbers and analysis, but this, this is, this is, this is not great because it isn't 17% or 13% or whatever. You need to put the number of students that are in high school and then the target of those students, not as a percentage of the overall student body, because that's not what we're funding. So you need to present the information in the context with that which we've approved. So we have, and I'm running the numbers mentally, but it's about 52,000 high school students, correct? So 52,000 is the base number, and then however many we already know have access to a tablet, and then the gap, and then the fact that we're trying to actually put one in each student, those are the numbers that we need to be talking about, not 189,000. I mean, is this...
So, so let me just say this. Part of this is the partnership, right? Y'all, we did not have targets. We're bringing you metrics, we're bringing you targets, and we're asking for your feedback to let, get a plan that was good, get better, to get even better. So this is why we have the 12 of you.
Our goal is not 17% of anything. It's not.
I get, I get the point. We, we picked the denominator that was everything versus just the high school, which is where we've gone. That's your point.
Well, but it's, it's, what's the N? And the N isn't 189,000. The N is whatever the, the current goal is. And the current goal isn't to put a tablet in the device of 189,000 children's hands. And so, that it's some percentage of that at ninth through 12th grade. That's, that's not how numbers work. I, I mean, I...
I can say that we did have some discussions about that. So we had, we had discussions about whether or not we focus solely on high school students, or we look at this in an aspirational lens where we want, at some point, all of our students to have that access. We can certainly take that feedback and only focus on high school if that's the will of the board. But again, our aspiration is that all of our students in Fairfax County in grades three through 12 have access to a device. And so, that's how we have that data. But again, we can certainly have that focus on high school because we did have those very conversations at the leadership team level.
But goals have to be achievable and, and connected to, the whole point of this, the whole frustration on many of us on the board has been that there is no strategic focus tying money to the goal. And this is where you, the rubber meets the road in saying, okay, we have money, and are we going to now tie the money to what we strategically are focusing on? Now, you can have short and mid and long-range goals if you want to have that, but we have not, as a board, decided that it's our mission to put a tablet into the hands of, you know, elementary-age children. We haven't. And we're, we're barely even there for high school. So to, to attribute percentages of subgroups with the N being 189,000, one, you make the goal unachievable. It's, you're, we're now not, we're, it's not even in the aspirational, we're not pursuing something we'll ever achieve if this is how we document, how, how we're directing our resources, our resources of people and professional development and, and target acquisition. So, so that, I think, is, does not reflect. Can we go back to the aspirational, the initial aspirational statements? I think it was page three or two, three or whatever that was? No, the before that, page up. So...
Yes, this is the first page there.
No.
You want to scroll down a little bit?
No, the, the success, the, yeah, where it says success, the be successful in math? Okay, there we go, thank you. So this is, this is my concern. If you look at those first bullets, or that, that section of bullets under aspirational statements, be successful in reading and math, okay, I got that. Be college or career-ready, got it. Graduate on time, got it. Have a plan for college or career, okay. Then we start to slide because we don't necessarily agree that it's, that it's for everybody have the access. So that's not, I don't think that's codified correctly here because that's not what, that's not the goal. That's not even an aspirational statement at this point. The, the real problem I have is demonstrate academic English proficiency. First of all, that is such a low-bar statement. Second of all, if you are successful in reading and math, and you're college or career-ready by the time you graduate, and you graduate on time, you better, you better be proficient in English.
This one refers to our English language learners and demonstrating English proficiency within a certain period of time, which is defined as five years in the metric. So I think that's unclear from what's listed here. I think it might be interpreted to be more broadly, but this one is specifically for our English language learners.
But it, that, but again, if you have, if you meet any of the first four, you've met that by default. And so, that seems like that's a carve-out that, like, well, if you're not successful in reading and math, and you're not college or career-ready by graduation, and you don't graduate on time, and you don't have a plan for college or career after high school, well, at least we hope that you're proficient in English. It just, it's like one of these things does, is not like the other, and that does not fit because that seems like, I mean, maybe that's a sub-aspirational goal under one of these, but it looks like we've, all of a sudden, once you've passed all of these bullets, now we've all of a sudden lowered the bar.
Yeah, I think you raised a good point about the perception and where it's listed. I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear what that was actually referring to. And when you look at the actual metric, it's to develop English proficiency within five years, which is a really aggressive timeline for expectation. So really what we're saying is, we want to make sure that our English learners of, you know, 36,000 students in FCPs are getting proficient in English so they can do those other things that are listed above them in a timely way. But it does, I see how you're saying it might not make sense to have...
Sloan, I think, if I could, Ms. Schultz, I think the point is, the first three words are "all students will." And the last bullet is about a subgroup of kids, which is why I think that's, that's your feedback.
If you want to address under, down below, under be successful in reading and math, you want to have a goal, a goal for ESOL students that they become proficient in English within five years? That's a goal, that's not an aspirational statement because I don't care if you're an ESOL student, I still want you to be successful in reading and math. I still want you to be, I, I don't want to have a separate set of expectations that are lowered because you're an ESOL student. I want to have a target goal that's directed to you to give you the resources that you need, but you still have, we, I still want you to be successful in math.
Ms. Schultz, what's your...
This does not belong here.
You're suggesting it gets treated in the same way as our achievement gaps, that it's a sub-bullet, that everybody, we're an inclusive approach, everybody will be proficient in reading and math, and then under, when you dig down deeper, that will be a goal within that?
Yes. And then if we could go down to the goal one, where it says the capstone, has the capstone project and the...
Bottom of page three.
Bottom of page three. So, number, well, no, no, slide back down because I want to see the top of the page too. So I have maintained a problem with this top student success goal. We have, this is out of our lane. We do not control whether children who are at home in preschool are, are skill-ready when they cross our transom in kindergarten. I, I know that people have a belief, a strong belief in pre-K, especially for children at risk. That's fine. We have some control over that, although we're not even meeting that because the 800 get left on the waiting list. So we can't even, we're not even taking charge of, with the Board of Supervisors, that, that subgroup that are on the waiting list. And to expand the goal that all future FCPs students, meaning children that are home with their parents in preschool, will be, we, where do we play in this lane? We, we have no responsibility in this. And so, I maintain that that is a problem and that that's outside of our lane. And then with the portrait of a graduate, if you could just slide down a little bit, I, I have heartburn with passing grade. A passing grade on an end-of-year capstone project, that sounds like, again, a low bar. Why would we want you to just, we want you to have a successful, you know, a successful research project, capstone project, but a passing grades, like, well, we just want you to not fail. That, I don't, I don't think that's the best language. That's, that's all I have for now.
So Ms. Schultz, if you would like to put in draft language on how to change that verbiage, it would be greatly appreciated.
Demonstrate proficiency.
Okay.
Yep. Proficiency or mastery of, yeah.
Excellent. And now I have Ms. Keys, Gamara.
Okay, so I want to make sure I'm focusing on what you guys told me to talk about because
because I read the whole thing, but you broke it up in a different way.
We're, we're focused on student success at this point.
So, you haven't got to workforce, so I'm gonna talk about that later.
We haven't gotten to workforce, yeah.
All right, um. And did we go over the numbers for AP and IB? I guess I could start on page one then because we referenced those. And I'm sorry, reference, page two, where we talk about, uh, participation rates will be similarly high across all student groups. And my question, my first question has to do with, um, I think it's a great goal. Um, but I'm, let me know if I'm digging too much into the other part because my study wasn't based on how you broke it up. So, um, my question is, with respect to selecting people, how is it different? Because if we don't have a different way of approaching those programs, we're gonna have the same outcome. More of a strategy?
So, so I think that as we're looking at the measure, so this, this is how we're going to measure. So, that's more of a, a how, we'll get there as we look at how students are selected into those programs and the kind of criteria that we use for-
Right.
-uh, selecting students. Uh, really, we were focused on the metric for how we measure that. And then as part of the goal report, uh, as we report out on that metric, uh, instructional services would, and with, along with our RAS, would be, uh, working to provide information on how we're achieving this particular, uh, target.
Okay, I'll come back to that. Um, I see all these things as being interwoven, and I'm wondering if the success has to include some of the things like discipline and absences? Because as we heard from our principals who were here, they couldn't get to the success of their students until they dealt with some of these behavioral components.
So, one thing that we found is, working on this, I call it, it's a project for us, uh, with the plan is that, that there are several areas that overlap, and it's very difficult to pull things out discreetly. But wanting to ensure that we were able to show the, the board and the community that we're focused in particular areas, uh, we have placed things under particular buckets or in particular goal areas. But we have those same conversations around whether or not this particular item lives in student success or is it in caring culture? Uh, is this really a student safety issue? Is this a caring culture? So, we've had those discussions, and we've placed the items where we feel they make the most sense, uh, in the larger, larger scheme of things. Also understanding that, you're exactly right, as we think about overall student success, uh, some of those factors that are in caring culture, uh, do actually support overall student success. So, we do look at it as a document that, at the end of the day, supports student success. And if you remember, and actually, it's on the, the PowerPoint presentation, when we look at the, the one pager that we've, uh, sent around to all of our schools and departments, it shows that everything does eventually roll up into student success. It starts with resource stewardship, it then goes to premier workforce, caring culture, which then at the end of the day, overall, supports student success.
Okay, well, I'll wait to get into the nitty-gritty of it, thanks.
So, Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Evans.
So, I, I will say, I really appreciate the framework of this, um, in terms of having a little more intentionality to it. But what I would like to, um, ask for consideration is, when you look at the first one of the what, FCPS will eliminate gaps, page two. Meaning-
I'm gonna have the different document.
Yeah, for the eliminating gaps. If you go down under success and where it then says participation rates, here's where I would like to, um, suggest we consider being more intentional and more accurate in our what, in our how. Because the what says, um, includes achievement for all students. The how is transform practices to ensure all students achieve academic excellence. And yet, when you go down to success, and it's participation rates will be similarly high across student groups, well, I've been battling this issue with FCPS before I've joined the board. Participation rates don't translate to achievement. That's kinda like the lowest bar possible. And in fact, this school division, before I joined it, eliminated honors courses because they wanted to promote kids either taking AP courses at all cost. So, they took out honors, English, and social studies for juniors and seniors in our high schools. And this, our board in two thousand and twelve thankfully brought them back into the curriculum. So, I'm pointing this out, Dr. Brabham, because I think it needs to say participation and performance rates. If it, if we're being aspirational, it's not just they participate. If we have gaps in achievement in these areas, like your SAT and ACT performance, your AP and IB test scores, even in the grades that students are earning in these classes, we can have more kids participating, but if they're not achieving, your gaps will remain. And letter grades, test scores, those are just our, our data markers for showing. So, participation rate's like one data marker, but then it's the achievement markers we need, performance. Yeah. So, I just think that you can't be saying that we're hitting success because they participated. And what's interesting, too, is, um, you know, we look at Algebra I by eighth grade. So, I mean, that is a marker. What about when we wanna talk about, um, one of the precursors we know as being on grade level by, is it third grade? You know, success by third, I mean, there's, there's just, to me, I'm trying to just make sure we're all singing from the same sheet of music, which is, what are our expectations? And these just seem really thin and, um, but I actually think by adding some of the things I'm suggesting, it's stuff I would presume that, Dr. Brabham, you and the staff are already tracking and measuring. But I think we need to show substance to our, our families and community on this.
Yeah, I think we definitely, I think that's a really good point. Um, and I definitely think we can make, you know, that adjustment. If it's the will of the board, we're certainly happy to do that. Um, because we, we have been reporting largely the performance rates in a lot of these categories. So, the goal one report has largely been about performance. So, take, for example, Algebra I by eighth grade. Typically, what we've reported is how many students and subgroup performance, what does that look like in terms of students taking the course and passing the associated SOL? But what we're trying to do here is expand that equity lens out a little bit because, really, that performance data is actually masking some access and opportunity gaps that we have that we need to look at. So, I think, as you say, doing both is probably on some of these where the, where the correct balance is. Um, SAT is another one, AP and IB is another one, where we've typically reported performance. But the participation is where we see our larger gap. So, it's trying to figure out how to do both, um, and how to create room for that in a streamlined plan, um, to make sure that we're giving the board the information that's most important.
Well, I appreciate what you were saying, um, Dr. Presidio. And I, I wouldn't necessarily say it needs to be one or the other. And one of the things that we've often said as board members, and we certainly hear from the public, we can't keep having information in different places. So, if this is gonna be our bible that the public can look at, that the board can look at, or anybody else, it should all be in the same place. So, I would hope that my colleagues will support the fact that, let's go ahead and add in, it's performance, our participation and performance rates will be similar across, and then add in those other areas.
We can do that. Look, can I just ask, and maybe other board members, we've picked, we've picked markers that are middle and high school, and you think we need at least one at elementary around third grade to be put in?
I, I do. I mean, we will look like, uh, an ill-informed board at minimum, let alone a school division, if we don't mention being on, on, on grade levels by third grade. I mean, these are just, people are looking at this.
Okay, I think we've, I think we've had a marker for that anyway. Pre- previously, we just, we can lift it into the plan.
We can. And, and I think part of the challenge has been, we've reported so much data in the past to the board that it gets lost, and it gets lost to the public. Because, for example, on the reading and math, what we've typically put in the front of the report is three through twelve, kind of in aggregate performance. And then we disaggregate that and provide a lot of information in the appendix by particular grade-level bands. So, like you're saying, early literacy, the middle grades, and high school. And I think when we do that, there's so much information that some of it tends to get lost. So, um, we certainly can do it. We've gotta find the right balance of highlighting the things that we think, um, are most important for the public to see, and the things that are most important for us to drive our internal accountability.
I, I appreciate that. I will just close again with saying, if we do not put performance as well as participation in this-
Right, right.
Then, and, and I do still think that you-
I think that's a really good point.
People are gonna ask if they don't see it in here, so those tests for performance that we already do, put them on the gap.
Performance done, done.
It's a great point, and I definitely appreciate you bringing that up.
But no, it is, it is exactly, this is a-
Let's move on, Ms. Evans.
We are, and we'll, we'll look at an elementary marker.
Ms. Evans?
Uh, thank you. I, um, thank you for the presentation. Well done. Um, could you please put up page ten of the, yes, page ten? So, I, I know others have already brought this up, but I, I did just want to say that, that this, these numbers do give me concern. Particularly when we look at the economically disadvantaged. Uh, only four percent. Uh, and if you would clarify for me, are we talking only about level four at centers or all level four? What are we talking about?
All students are identified for level four services.
Whether base school or center?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, but not any other level of, of advanced academics, not the level three, not the, just at level four? Okay. So, I, I, it just makes me wonder, you know, what, what are we looking for? Um, and how are we dealing with, uh, different types of students? So, I raise that because that number is, is, um, so striking, you know, as well as some of the others, the differentials there. So, um, just wanted to raise that, and I think that we need to have a, a conversation about, about why that, that is a lengthier conversation. And other than that, because I am, I apologize, I am gonna have to leave, I just wanna thank you for putting in a measurement on sleep for the next section, so thank you.
And, and to note that the importance of having baseline data and targets, uh, it helps us have these conversations around where we need to apply our resources. So, uh, you having some pause about these particular data, uh, helps us as we all have that conversation around where we place our resources as a system. So, uh, it, it's the purpose of having these data points in here so that we can have those conversations around this table.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Do you have more?
No.
Okay, thank you. I have Ms. Strauss, followed by one go-back being Ms. Hines, and then we'll go to the next section.
I just have a, just a brief comment. So, we do have so much data in so many different places, and it's always the difficult choice of where to put it. And I guess the question, and I have no answer, but as I listen to my colleagues wanting more data in different places and et cetera, at the end of this report, as you can do hot links, is it possible to at least link to all sort of public data, particularly on student achievement? Does that make sense at all? Because for people who read this in the community, you know, they, there's some who wanna read absolutely everything that there is because we do have a lot of public reports. Is that something worth considering, at least in a hot link?
I, I, I think, actually, it would be helpful, well, I will just tell you my own personal perspective on this as somebody who's been, uh, doing the goal one report or the student success report for a number of years. Um, the way that we've done it is, we've tried to find, and, and again, we had so many metrics, right? In, in the comprehensive strategic plan. Um, what we, what we did is, we found what we thought were the most important data sets-
Right.
-to include in the narrative report. And then we linked to the supplemental data sets in the appendix of the report.
Right, exactly.
And what you end up with is a report that's about a hundred and seventy pages long, right? So, all the information's there, but it would take a person a tremendous amount of time to access and understand all of that data. So, I think one of the things that we need to figure out as we move to the streamlined plan-
Right.
-is, is there something that might work better from the board's perspective? Is there a better way to format the report? Uh, because we're happy to do that, however the board would like to do. And it's something, actually, Dr. Ivey and I just started talking about, is, you know, what's the best way to do that? What might best meet the board and the community's needs? So, I don't know that we necessarily could answer that question today. Um, but I'm certainly very happy to listen, um, to any board member's thoughts and comments, and if anybody has an opinion on that, I might be happy to speak with them because we've gotta find a format that's gonna work.
No, I agree, and I appreciate the more streamlined piece, but in this age of hot links, I just never know, can you actually, and-
And that's what we've done in the, and that is what we've done in the past.
Right, yeah.
And, and Ms. Strauss, we do have the notion of the report, but we also think about where this is going to eventually live online.
Right.
And we'll have links to other data sources, we'll have links to the equity profile. So, when someone comes to the strategic plan landing page, uh, they will see a variety of resources that they can click on for more information.
Right, because it would be useful not, you know, to whoever is researching us. And that was, this gives us an opportunity to rethink that.
Because if I'm looking at your targets and your baseline, and then I wanna pull back and go somewhere else for more information, all those data sources will be on the website so that they, so people can do that very research.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, we have one more who hasn't spoken, Ms. Palchek, and then we have a couple of go-backs.
Yes, thank you. And I, and I do think we're headed in the right direction. And I apologize if this was asked or if it's a little bit too much to ask. Um, but I'm sitting here wondering, and I, I love that we have metrics that are far above what I've seen in the past, is kind of, um, education, either the interventions, right? So, is there an easy way, and maybe as you ask, how we want to see this data and information? I know for some of them, I link to what we're working on to address that. But here, I think we're, we're clearly stating, um, the issues, the data, where we are, where we want to be. Uh, and then I guess, just thinking about, as we start to look at the intervention so we can more easily see what is working, what's not, you know, and what are the next steps.
So, so it's taken us a while to get to this point. So, this is just the first part of a prioritization process. So, as we look at this at staff, we're waiting for the board's, uh, approval for this work. And then the next steps are that, once we get the go-ahead to say that, yes, this is the work and this is what's important, we've already begun, uh, looking at the framework for what these action plans will look like. So, you're talking about interventions. Uh, and then, uh, as we come back, each of our champions sitting here at the table will be working with their team to develop action plans for how we do this work. And then as we report out to the board on our data during our goal reports, it's also to give the board some highlights about the work that we're doing around, uh, these data. And that comes through the action, uh, the action plan. So, that's all part of the development. We're right at the process of, if this is the direction that we're going, great, so that we're ready to start jumping in on the, the next step of action plans and being able to provide that information to the board.
Okay, no, that's very helpful. Um, so I would say overall, you know, and may, we may go specifically into a few things. From what I've seen so far, I, I'm just very pleased that we're really showing this data. Um, I do agree with, I think, both of you, um, Ms. McLaughlin and, um, Dr. Presidio, that A, we need to show access, um, because there are many students who are not even showing up in that data because they don't have access, they're not taking that. So, it's kind of that first step, can we get more students in there? Um, and then the next step is also, right, how are they achieving? And what are we doing to ensure that they do? Because starting from very early on, as we have those conversations about advanced academics, TJ, et cetera, we really need to start to address the access and the opportunities that, gaps that are starting so much earlier. And we know that, and so I think it's time that we really push forward on that. Um, so I do, I, I think, um, overall, this is going in the right direction. Um, the tools, and maybe there's some magical tool, um, to help us track and see how we make sense and communicate all of this information will sort of be the, some of the next steps. But, um, I'm just very happy to see metrics that I think we can really work with here and push the needle forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palchek. So, we do have a couple of go-backs. We've got, uh, Ms. Hines with a go-back, Ms. Keys-Gamara, and Ms. McLaughlin. And then we'll go to the next section. I'm gonna keep our go-backs to thirty seconds so that we can try to catch up if possible, folks.
Okay, um, this is a really great report, really great work. And I, I start that way because I wanna say that this chart right here on page ten, participation rates in advanced academic programs, is to my mind completely unacceptable. It's painfully honest. It shows that we are not actually identifying kids by innate ability, but we are identifying them by other factors, like what sort of support they have at home. Uh, factors that we already know affect, um, how kids do in school. Uh, I think it's a, it's a portrait of failure, what we see right there. And if we don't have the bottom line there at our target, if every single number on that bottom line is not the same, then we are admitting and accepting failure. then we are admitting and accepting failure. So are we going to vote for this?
We will be voting for the strategic plan, and the purpose of this is to look at the metrics and tell where we're at.
Well, I'm trying to be brief, but I can tell you that I will not raise my hand to support, and, and you know, the rest of this report and everything is wonderful, but I will not raise my hand to support this admission that we discriminate in our AAP programs, because that's what we're saying. Whether we mean to or not, if we are accepting that outcome, and we've been doing this since the 1970s, so it's not like it's a surprise to us that this is what's happening. I just, I can't accept that.
So if I look at the data that we have here, these are our two-year targets for moving toward ensuring that our participation rates are the same. And so as we look at that six-year period broken up into two-year increments, we agree that this isn't where we want to end up. It's that we're trying to get those participation rates up. And so as we develop the targets, we were looking at measurable and attainable targets that we could reach for students. And so we agree that this isn't where we want these numbers to be in the next two years. We can see ourselves moving us in this direction, but of course, over the course of this plan, we would want to see those numbers being much higher.
So I'll tell you, and I'll finish with this, I'm sorry, but I would say if we really think that this is the best we can do with the program that we have, then my suggestion is that we scrap the program or have a strategic plan to scrap the program and replace it with something that is equitable.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. That is a conversation, I think, that will require a little deeper dive, and if, we can certainly have a conversation about that at some point, about equity in AAP. I would like to give Ms. Keys-Gamara an opportunity to go back, followed by Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Schultz.
Okay, I'll be brief, and I'll thank Ms. Hines for helping to express my frustration with looking at all of this. And I agree that we need to have a better way for the community to see how we're moving forward. I am thinking about all of the programs I've heard up until now, working on some of these areas. And, you know, it suggests that we need to, you know, have we made any progress? It doesn't look like we've, we've just kind of maintained the status quo, which is why I started with my question, which was, if we don't do anything different, we're going to continue to have these kinds of results. And if you look at what we're expecting, for Hispanic students, I think it's about a 7%, no, 3% increase. How many years would it take us to get where we need to be? That, I think fundamentally, and I'm, I'm not taking, hopefully not taking any of this out on you guys, but fundamentally, that's my problem with this, with what we're suggesting here. We, we simply cannot, in any reasonable amount of time, get to where we need to be with these kinds of projections. We just can't. And so we, we obviously need something, something drastic. I know that we have the Equity Office and all of that, and so I was going to suggest that there be some sort of cross-reference with the dashboard, that, yeah, the profile.
The profile.
Right.
And so I'm hearing everything loudly and clearly, and I think my colleagues are as well. The purpose of the plan is so that we can be strategic. As we looked at the data over time and we look at our trend data, it's been very flat over time. And so one of the difficulties we had in addressing some of our targets and looking for growth in trend data was that we didn't see that growth. So you're exactly right, if we keep doing what we've been doing, then we're only going to get the same results. I think that as we have these discussions, while it might be very painful to see these data, they are what they are, and we're having exactly the right conversations that we need to have about the resourcing. As Ms. Schultz talked about, how do we expend to get to where we need to be? This is where we springboard the conversation with the board for where do our resources need to go? For any of these areas that you see that are appalling, that give you pause, and we can use a variety of other statements that board members have used about some of the shock around these data, that then helps us have that conversation around where we apply resources as a board. So this document is to do just that, and we're hopeful that, that we can have those conversations.
Let me just add to Marty's thing, it's not just funding, it's programs, it's practices, and let's just be honest. We need help from you as part of representing the community. There's reasons why we haven't made changes. There's reasons why superintendents haven't proposed to eliminate things. If we're going to make equity front and center, we need to have a partnership between the administration and school board about what things we're willing to take on and expect that some will say, wait a second, why are you doing this? So we're, I mean, I am clear-eyed what we're doing by giving you this data. It is, it is bothersome to say we're a world-class school system to see this data. What do we want to do about it? What have we done, what has worked, what hasn't, what do we need to do differently? And I think the truth is, when this equity work happens, and I'll defer to Dr. Duran, it takes the administration and the school board working together versus, oh, you did that? No, we're not going to do that. I mean, so it's got to be, we're all in together figuring out how we're going to move forward versus it's all on the administration to figure out. No, it's all on the school board to figure it out. It's actually on both sets of us to say, what are our next steps? But part of it is, is having a roadmap and having the facts out there, because the facts are what the facts are, and then what are we going to do about it?
And using this to leverage that decision-making.
Well, your facts are your three-year baseline. It's the target that I think you're hearing some concerns around this table on, but I'm.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify that point. With respect to, yeah, why are our, and I understand where we have been, but given the information that I, we have been advocating, I know I'm not the only board member who's been advocating for what's happening in other areas, where have other people been successful? I expect more than a 3% increase, I just do. And if we can't do that, then we need to find out who has the, who has it, and we need to do better. I mean, that, I think, is fundamentally where I have a problem, because expectations define where a child believes that they can go. And if that's all we're looking for, then we're not going to see much difference in the expectation. We need to send a clear message to everybody that we will not tolerate disparate treatment of any type. It may not be intentional, I don't really care whether it was intentional. When it is harming children, it is, it's just harmful. And, you know, I'm, I'll stop there, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. Now we have Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Schultz, followed by Mr. Moon, and then Ms. Strauss, and then we're going to the next section.
So one of the things I was looking at as people were talking, let's go with page 10, on that participation rates for the AAP programs. One of the things that's so important, again, having data and context and things in a more comprehensive one spot to have the analysis and, and the discussion is, we don't even have the participation rates of the overall general population. So I'm going to go with what I've sort of heard out there, which is roughly 20% of our second graders get identified to go into the AAP center. So if that number is roughly correct, then when you put the different subgroups in, you can benchmark that to see how off we might be in terms of gaps. So it's, so the gaps among the subgroups is important, but it's also the gap of the total population that we need to kind of then, I think, understand that, for example, in the subgroup of whites, it's 23%, the target is to go up to 26%. And I'm sure what that's based on. Is it based on the fact that, what percentage whites make up of the student population within Fairfax County? But, I mean, if we're seeing that AAP is roughly 20, again, I love that number, because then the target should be, we'd see across all subgroups, 20%, 20% of every subgroup is achieving or participating in that and being identified for it. I hope that's made some sense. And, and then, I guess, in terms of the earlier concern I had, because I felt like there's, where there was some pushback even from my colleagues who spoke afterwards, it's not about being unreasonable, it's not suddenly saying we want to throw the whole kitchen sink in. If we show a participation rate metric, show the performance metric with it. And I think that's just, again, having a more holistic conversation. And then people keep talking about this as a report, so I apologize because I'm only looking at what was printed out for me, but let's be really careful each other, because I'm seeing Sloan shaking his head that it's not really a report. But, I mean, we, we, we can't call something a report that even I'm a board member thinking, oh, well, which reports? It's going to be 170 pages of report. Report means we're actually going to have all of this drill down analysis. If this is just the plan and we're laying it out, then today's discussion has been good, I think, for saying, what do we expect in the plan? And I would still stand by my earlier remarks then.
No, you're 100% correct, and I, and I apologize if there was any miscommunication on that. What I was trying to reference is, this is the plan, right? And once the board has adopted the plan with the particular metrics and particular performance targets, then we prepare an annual report in each of these goal areas. So this will largely dictate what information is included in the report, which is really important, because that's the information on an annual basis for internal accountability back to the board and the community. But today, we're just looking at the plan.
Thank you. And so again, I will say, if we're going to have an annual report, which is fantastic, and we want it to be meaningful, then that's why performance numbers are needed.
I think they understand that, and they're going to be doing that. So we have Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. Strauss, and finally, Mr. Moon, and then we'll move on.
So just the overarching, that I'm right back to, of the whole. We, we have to be transparent with the raw numbers and the percentages. But in particular, what about the special education? What about the goal on, or any goal related to special education? Whether it is the percentage of students with an IEP who meet the goals within their established IEP or something? Something that shows on the student growth progression model that students with a disability are actually acquiring skills and moving? Because everybody gets very upset about all of these subgroups, but as I've consistently pointed out for, I don't know, five or six years, the worst line of all the charts is the orange line at the bottom, which is students with disabilities. And disaggregating the students with disabilities, I think, may help, because you may talk about, you know, students who have, you know, a limited disability and some who have a profound disability, and that, that overall rate may be depressed by combining everybody together. I mean, you know, if you have somebody who is non-verbal and, you know, we're, we're not operating on the same plane versus a student with, you know, executive function, dyslexia, you know, autism, anything else, that we, where is, where are we measurably or appreciably talking about student growth progression on that, on that line?
Well, I can only answer the second part of your question, but last year, when you brought up the need to disaggregate by disability category, we did that. And that was a really helpful suggestion, because I think it does make it a lot more transparent about where we're at. So we would intend to continue to report in that fashion.
Right, but I'm talking about having a goal somewhere within here that, because if we're not, if we're not talking about it, I mean, by virtue of the fact of bringing that up, we eventually did it. And what I'm saying is I want to continue that aspect of now maybe having some intentional goals around this, and, and particularly marked around the SGP, because, you know, unlike maybe some of my colleagues, I don't know where everybody feels on this. We, we set a bar, and we say everybody's got to achieve at that bar, but sometimes, if you're like nine steps behind the bar, sometimes your ability to move forward seven steps, you're still two steps behind the bar, but you move seven steps. And that's, that is something that is to be acknowledged and celebrated. Is, I think, part of the conversation that we've tried to have with the state is start to freaking acknowledge the fact that students with disabilities can achieve, but we have to be able to appreciably denote their ability to move, you know, forward from where they are, not set the same bar that everybody else has.
Okay. Do you have any response to that?
So, so we agree, and other than that we've set those targets for our students with disabilities as we've disaggregated out and shown the baseline data and have set those targets for students with disabilities, as we looked at the targets and understood that some student groups might need more time, we're showing that that growth is phenomenal and we should celebrate that growth. We've recognized that for some of our student groups, specifically students with disabilities, and we've also taken a look at some of the data points and have pulled some of those students out as we've thought about the particular targets.
But you have no aspirational statements or goals around that?
We have the aspirational statement as we look at all students will. And so as we look at all students and then breaking that out, we felt that, that having those specific targets that we have for students with disabilities, we always used to just report out on the achievement levels in the data without any specific targets. We're now showing that we have clear targets for all of our students, including students with disabilities.
Okay, thank you. So now we have Ms. Strauss, followed by Mr. Moon, and then we will go to the next section. I think we're going to be here until 8 o'clock.
First of all, in, in terms of, of the, the way the plan lays out, I'm, I'm very pleased with it. I said that at the, at the board table last week. I think the organization of it, I mean, people have suggested more refinements, and all of that is, is, is really very important. It is important that we have the baseline data, it is what it is, and setting targets is difficult, particularly when we wished that the target of the outcome were different. But I don't want us to back off from that, I agree with Mr. Smith. It is, it is the place where we need to start the discussion, because we, we tried this quite a few years ago, sort of before the recession, and we kind of got stuck with, well, isn't our target 100% for everybody? And then it was, we just have to be realistic and face, face what is. The other difficulty, and again, Mrs. Schultz, I think, touched on it somewhat. When we look at any of these small graphs, we are aggregating a tremendous amount of children who are not monolithic in any of these categories. A child with profound disability and huge medical needs has a different need and is going to have a different outcome than a child with, with a speech language need. A child, obviously, who comes to us, let's say a 12, 13, 14, has never been in school and does not speak English, has tremendous needs, and we all know that. But I wouldn't want that challenge or that difficulty to get in the way of a plan that can be used, and that can be used to challenge us to go forward. But I think all of us understand, we're all either parents or educators. Individual children have all been rolled up into large groups, but I don't know how else we get around it. So I think we continue to go forward, we be honest and present it and challenge ourselves as best we can. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to agree with Mrs. Strauss on, on the point she made. I understand that some of my colleagues expressed consternations regarding a, a particular target goal for one of the groups on page number 10. You know, looking at the numbers, thinking about a little more, and also, you know, seeing the target as SY School Year's 1820 target, which is only a year and a half left. I think that's still pretty reasonable goal. I am not even sure whether we can actually achieve all these goals within, within a year and a half. Hope that we do, but I cannot say that for sure with the confidence that we can get there. On Hispanic, that, you know, if you could comment on a, a extent of overlap between Hispanic, economically disadvantaged, and ELS, or ELS, there is a, there's a large overlap of those categories. You know, between Hispanic and ELS, my recollection is that at least at one point, at least at one point, 50% of Hispanic were in ELS, and 50% of ELS were Hispanic. Whether that is still the case or some are similar to that?
So, I don't know the exact percentage off the top of my head. But we did report on that last year in last year's student success report. So we'd be happy to send out some of that data again to the board, at least from last year, because we are looking at a very significant overlap of some of these populations. So as Mr. Moon has alluded, a large number of students in the Hispanic category are also economically disadvantaged and/or also English learners.
So, with that in mind, looking at the current number, you know, if, for the ELS, it's only 1%. That's what you have at this point in time. And 50% or somewhat closer to that is Hispanic is ELS. Already, we're starting at a very low point for that particular group, that particular group. And seeing that right now, through your baseline for Hispanic shows 7%. Non-EL Hispanic groups should be doing about 14%, double of that, or somewhat, you know, somewhat close to that. And if the overall target in a year and a half is for the entire group to go up to 10%, 10%, non-EL Hispanic groups' performance would be, should be way above 10%. I mean, I see that somewhat closer to maybe 15%. I mean, that's just based upon my rough calculation of using, with the premise is that about 50% of Hispanic are ELS. And so, if I could have more data regarding at least for that particular group, then I'll have a much better understanding of how the staff has set that as a target, how I can explain to anybody who's asking me. I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that I'd be happy with just seeing 10% for the Hispanic. At the same time, you know, going from 7% to 10% in a year and a half for a large part of, when a large part of that group is ELS, as a former EL myself, is not an easy task. I think earlier, you mentioned about five years as amount of, I mean, amount of time a year is expected to become proficient in English language. Based upon my own experience, it's more like a seven years rather than five, you know, five years. Five years is rarely pushing it.
And we can certainly get that information for you on how we establish the targets. And it's the same struggle that we have in terms of establishing targets, setting high expectations, and then also thinking about the attainability of those targets.
So, I haven't spoken, and I'm going to be very brief. There are a number of areas where there are some common themes across everybody around this table that I believe the board would like a deeper dive or a better understanding. And the first area is in better understanding what the long term, or the medium term is a better way of looking at the medium term of access, participation, and success in advanced academic programs by all the subgroups. So, recognizing that this is an 18-month window on this chart, but I think we need to have a deeper dive as to how we ensure that the AAP is more representative of the demographics of this county and not only just access to those programs, but success in those programs. And so, I, and I'm not sure that we're fully representing this because I think we're only looking at the Level 4. But there's some blending with the local Level 4 and other areas. And so, we need a deeper dive there. Additionally, there's been a request for some clarification of numbers for access to tablets and computing, a wish to see project momentum integrated somehow into the strategic plan. And the participation and performance rates should be across, wherever we say participation, that it should be both participation and performance. We want to add a third grade marker to, or a third grade measurement. And also, looking at absences, intruency as part of the success. Okay? So if you all want to move on to section two?
And so, in the interest of time, rather than go through each section one by one, I know that there were questions that board members had around the table about other questions. So, we would certainly open ourselves up to questions then that board members had on caring culture, premier workforce, and resource stewardship.
I hope my board members will humor me. And we really do need to put a fixed stop on this. This was supposed to go from 1:00 to 3:00. We're at 3:25 now. We may want to go till 4:15. Is that enough? Okay? So, let's stay focused for the next 50 minutes, please. So I have Ms. McLaughlin as her first hand up. Okay, Ms. Schultz first, followed by Mr. Moon.
So, under resource stewardship, if we could go to, I think it's page 12 of 19. On 12? Well, I'm in the, I'm on the, actually, the PowerPoint presentation.
Oh, so... I would go to page...
It says...
Six on the document that we have up.
Okay.
Those are all of the resource stewardship. There we go. Page 6.
Right. There we go. So, I think I've continued to ask this question, and I know that we've somewhat answered it in the past. But on the first, and I have a question about a couple of these bullets. But the first bullet is staying within the $1,000 average cost per pupil of the WABE schools. There's an economy of scale issue that you have with 189,000 students that Arlington, which has, what, 24,000 or 25,000? I forget which. That the question becomes, why is what other school districts spend when they don't have our school system, our infrastructure? You know, why is that the benchmark for us?
So, Ms. Schultz, this is actually part of the Goal 4 presentation as well, where we talk about the WABE and why we use that particular metric. Would you like us to answer that now as part of this discussion? Because we will get into it as part of the Goal 4 Resource Stewardship presentation where we talk about...
Can stave it off for that one.
Okay.
The second one, all schools will have adequate classroom space for students eliminating the need for trailers. I don't know that we have a strategic goal in mind for doing this. It is what CPDC, in concert with, Mr. Plattenberg's not here, with Mr. Plattenberg and his staff are trying to get a handle on. But the, that, this is very closely attuned to the third bullet, which is spending allocated based on strategic decision. Well, if we don't have a plan for eliminating it and our ed specs are written in such a way that, that how a classroom looks or how a school building looks is more important than the education that's being delivered in the classroom, then, you know, again, this is an issue of priorities. Are we driving the priorities of our relationship with the board of supervisors, of getting outside subject matter experts to help us with potential other funding streams and look at infrastructure in a different way? I just, I know this is an aspirational, but I don't know that we've even, that we're, we are actually driving to this aspiration.
So, I can tell you that as we talk about this not being the plan, but just where we're going and what the target is, we're looking at a 5% reduction year over year. And so, that's part of the particular target. As we come back and look at the action plans and the plan around that, everything you're saying is part of how we get there. So, what we're looking for right now is just the fact that, yes, this 5% reduction year over year would be a good target for us to shoot for and then create the plan for how we get there.
And will that also include evaluating ed specs and allowing us to be more fungible with ed specs? Because as we move towards a potential model of like an alternative view of the way we look at schools and that every school doesn't have to be the same, that is an equity, that the equity is what happens in the classroom. So we may have more urban schools. We may have, you know, more virtual schooling. We may have, I mean, things may look differently for that space. And so, we're, we are, the intention is to drive towards that?
Channeling Mr. Plattenberg, as we've talked about in previous discussions with the CIP, looking at programs, looking at boundaries, looking at more funding from the Board of Supervisors, all of that will be part of how we get to this particular target.
So, I just, just as my colleagues, I'm just propping you for as you see the work that we're doing on CPDC and what we will be bringing forth. Really, I think that this component of the strategic plan is the work that the CPDC is going to be proposing that we get far more intentional on because we can't really plan on this. Because we do all this work on the budget and we submit all these questions, but we never submit any questions about CIP. The CIP is drafted, it's presented to us with asset. And then, we kind of never get back to it again. And the intentionality of this part, as you see what's going to be coming forward from the work that we're doing on CPDC, I just want to prep you that that's, this is exactly where this, that part is focused.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. I think it's not only that, but also the discussion regarding boundaries and best practices and what the goals of this board are in setting those.
It's like Francesco Rinaldi. It's in there.
Yes, okay.
And as we've been reporting out, we've always reported how, what our numbers of trailers are at this point, but we have not set a target for reducing that number. And so, this is that first attempt to set that target and then figure out the plan to get there.
And I would posit, though, it's beyond just that. It's overcrowded classrooms, overcrowded schools, not enough itinerant space. It's the boundary, it's all of it. The whole, the whole physical plant side of where kids wind up coming to school every day.
So I have Mr. Moon, followed by Ms. Keys-Gamaro.
Okay. My, one of my favorite topics, trailers, temporary classrooms, or learning colleges. I think I had expressed my displeasure at least a couple of times in the past when we are only going at this pace. I was trying to find the exact numbers from the report, but they're reducing it by 5% is basically going on the same pace as before. I am not willing to wait another 20 years. I don't think anybody will expect me to stay on the board or even in this county for the next 20 years.
Oh, the county.
That county will stay for 20 years. I don't know whether our kids will be able to stay for 20 years in those trailers. I think about a week, week or week and a half ago, I think I did ask superintendents and superintendents, you know, agreed to take a look at what the Prince William County, was it, was it the Prince William County? Was looking into doing it? I think, in my recollection is, they were thinking about working with the County Board of Supervisors to put in more than $200 million to address the problems, not in 20 years, immediately. I think that's the kind of approach I wanted the staff to take and us to take, take it to the board. I cannot accept this 5% reduction each year as our target, our goal. That has never been my goal. That has never been in my dream. And how many more times I have to repeat the same thing and see the same thing?
Well, let me, let me take a crack at this one. We wanted to put some measure in. Last year, for the first time in, what, 10, 15 years, we got $25 million more for the CIP. And I'm just going to be honest with this board in talking with the county executive. I think if, if we want to see more money from the county, they're going to want to see boundary changes happening sooner than later. And that's the hard political truth. That's why we're going through the boundary policy piece with you now and setting the goals, because it's time to get down to business if we want to game change the numbers. But that's what I would just share you on, honest to God.
Dr. Bradran, if the supervisors, if the supervisors want to see a quicker boundary change, let them ask us to do it. Let's see whether they will ask us to do that, go their route. Because we are, we are all serving the same constituents. Our students are their students. Our boundaries are their boundaries. So let's see whether they think that's the first way to go. But we need to have a plan. We need to have a much more aggressive plan than having a 20% or 5% each year. And then, because I began serving from 1996, 1995, go back to 1995. Ever since that time, the number of trailers has been growing. Many superintendents had some goals to reduce and eliminate and never worked because they were only being reactive rather than proactive. I mean, I see this as being reactive, still being reactive in my mind. I understand, Mr. Smith, that this is the first time we actually set a goal. No. Several superintendents ago, they set a goal to reduce by 10% each year. Didn't happen. So that's where I am on the trailers. I'm going to move on to next, next favorite issue dealing with premier workforce. And I think Mr. Smith knows that what I'm trying to focus on at this point, that when we're looking at with student success, we are looking at different sub, different categories of the groups, right? Different subgroups and discrepancies, the gaps amongst the subgroups. Why don't we do the same thing for premier workforce? I mean, I, you know, for example, you know, percentage of Hispanic in the county, percentage of Asian in the county is far greater than the percentage with the teachers in FCPS. And why don't we try to meet that gap? I mean, I don't think I see that here.
So, one thing, if we could go to slide 20. So to be able to address that in a larger sense, Mr. Moon, if you look at slide 20, one of the things that, one of the pieces that we didn't present the other night, we sort of presented the second piece of our work on hiring teachers. But if we look at what we have on slide 20, it's really about our recruitment of teachers. And if you look at that aspirational statement, we say that the diversity of qualified teacher applicants will match the diversity of Fairfax County residents. And then, when you look at the data that we've shown you, we look at the overall diversity of Fairfax County. And that's basically, if you look at the diversity versus white, you can see that Fairfax County has a diversity percentage of 48%. If you aggregate all diversity to 48% diverse and 52% white. If you look at Fairfax County's diversity of our qualified applicant pool, we're at 30% diversity candidates. And then, we have 66% white. So, overall, if you think about our efforts to create a more diverse pool of candidates, we want our pie to look like the Fairfax County pie. And so, we have several efforts underway to ensure that we are getting a more diverse pie. If you take those data and then switch to slide 21, our current breakdowns based on that 30%, 66% show that, you know, we have these current breakdowns of diverse applicants in our pool. And we want to make sure that if you're in the pool, that if we have 12% African-American candidates in the pool, you see that, that blue slice there, what we want is to make sure that we're hiring at 12%. So if you're in the pool, we want to make sure that you are in that group of teachers that we hired, that you're at 12%. When we increase the diversity of the pool, the numbers of, on the left, that are outside of that 66% are all going to increase. So when we increase the diversity of our pool, we might see an increase from 12% for black candidates. It could go up to 14, 16. black candidates, it could go up to 14, 16. When we look at the, the diversity for Hispanic, as the diversity of the overall pool increases, these numbers on the left increase. We want to make sure that as those numbers on the left increase, that the higher rates increase at the same percentage.
Mr. Smith, I understand. I, I mean, I read what you sent me earlier to my request, to my question regarding a, our efforts to increase the diversity of qualified applicants. And I appreciate, I think you mentioned that our initial target is to increase that by 6%.
The initial target is to?
To increase by 6%.
If you look on slide 20, it's to increase the overall diversity of the pool.
My question goes even one step further than that. If you look at, if you look at, on, on page 21, if you look at the pie chart among, among non-whites, non-Caucasians, that 12% for black, that pretty much represents the percentage of a black in Fairfax County. What's solely lacking is falling behind, lagging behind is Hispanic nations.
And so if you think about, so you're exactly right, when you look at slide 20, as our efforts go to increase the diversity of our pool, we will be looking at those areas where we're underrepresented in the system, and all of our efforts to recruit are around increasing the diversity of the overall pool.
Why see that anywhere in your report, that that is our plans?
So I, I think that in terms of the goal, it's one thing, we're talking about how we get there versus what we're going to report on. So in terms of the plan itself, we're not talking about how we're getting there, we're going to talk about what the target is and how we're going to measure it. As we look at the action plans for developing that work, Dr. Nixon here can talk about a lot of the things that we're currently doing and things that we plan to do in the future so that we can get there.
You know, Dr. Nixon, I know that we are, we are awfully behind our scheduled time. I mean, I don't mind scheduling a offline, you know, conversation with you on this particular topic.
Certainly.
So if my colleagues, you know, want to just move, you know, move on with all the board members.
Mr. Moon, I think what we're hearing from you, and I don't think that you are unique in expressing your concerns, are two areas where you want more aggressive targets. The first area is on the trailers, and then the second area is on the makeup of our workforce and that you would like as the strategic goal to be accelerated to make sure that our workforce reflects the demographics of our county. Is that correct, sir?
Correct.
So I think what we need to have from Mr. Smith and Ms. Nixon prior to us adopting this is some sort of communication, and I'm sure you can talk with Mr. Moon about it offline as well, but really coming back with a more aggressive approach to maybe, in the same way we talked about the AAP, we only have 18 months on this initial plan, but perhaps you provide a longer term plan as to how you're going to get to the makeup of our workforce.
Okay, and I'm, I'm very happy to share either, now I can give you a brief overview of some of the things that the talent acquisition management team has been doing in terms of addressing the, the need to look and recruit and think differently about how we go about finding a diverse workforce. Between last year and this year, the team has implemented and visited and hosted over 35 different kinds of events, either here centrally located at a high school, on various campuses across the country, the efforts to advertise in a variety of job post boards that really do target Latino and Hispanic associations, a presence at the NAACP conference, the National Conference of African American Administrators. They really have made an effort to advertise to all of these places. Just last week, we were in Richmond for the VASP conference, working very closely with Virginia State and other local institutions, higher ed partners, and all of the LEAs in the state of Virginia, you know, on a similar, similar quest, all, all districts looking for diversity, certainly in the workforce. And I'm very happy to put a comprehensive list together, but in terms of action items that align strategically with the numbers that we have here, to just put a, you know, an overview of where we've gone, how many people we've, we've met and interviewed, and really give you a sense of what we're doing on the road, where we're advertising, and what we're getting in return, to give you a more comprehensive snapshot of the efforts from the TAM team to address this situation.
And what I can do is have a discussion with our division council, because I think that some of the question that you're asking is around what kinds of targets can we set? And if we look at overall diversity and increasing that overall diversity, that's a target that I think is, that many school systems have as a universal target. But if we're looking at increasing diversity for certain groups, then we might need to have a legal definition or discussion about what it looks like to set targets for increasing diversity when it comes to certain groups. And so as we think about the overall diversity, our, our diversity efforts to increase diversity, as that diversity increases on page 20, then the numbers on page 21 and the slices of the individual slices of pie can only increase along with them. And when we think about how that diversity falls out, I would have to talk to, again, division council about how we go about setting those targets, whether it's for increased diversity overall versus looking at diversity for individual groups of, of teachers. And that could be problematic.
And, and part of it is that building these recruiting relationships with either historically black colleges or universities, and even Latino organizations, and I know the team-
Asian organizations.
Asian organizations. And a year ago, they met with the Asian Educators Association, and across the board from all of these different outreach efforts, a similar theme was that it really takes time to cultivate relationships with the institutions, that it's not just about meeting the students when they're in their senior year and they've just completed their student teaching. It really is about making introductions freshman year, going back. It's, it's actually even more than just a job fair or a college board, it really is about maybe even visits to the classroom. And that really is kind of cultivating relationships with the deans of the different departments of education. And so having met with these different, these different groups, they really have given us some really good advice, but a lot of that is the time that it takes to really cultivate the relationship before you really see that needle moving. But we are, we are working towards that.
You know, Dr. Nixon, you're making really good points. I would venture even to go even further than that. It starts even much earlier than college freshman year.
Right.
It goes beyond, beyond just college classrooms or even high school classrooms.
Right.
It should go to the communities.
Yes.
Because go to, because go to the parents, because go to the parents and families and how they, you know, certain community may see, certain culture may see their career in public education. That those efforts need to be made, and I haven't seen them.
And we are, go ahead.
And, and this year, for the first time, we have a, kind of a welcome back to Fairfax. So our talent acquisition management team is working very closely with the schools that have the Teachers for Tomorrow programs. And we are going to have a, a tracking of our Fairfax students who go on to major in education and having relationships and keeping in touch with our students that are going forward, hoping that they come back here to do their student teaching if they're at the local university, but if they're-
Dr. Nixon, you're missing the point. Don't wait until you see, you meet with the students majoring in education, you meet students way before they are still thinking about majoring in anything.
So can I offer a suggestion? We talked about this a couple moments ago. What the, the goal needs to be something along the lines of our workforce should reflect the demographics of the county, which is what you have as your metric. And then based on that, having a more in-depth plan, a deeper, more strategic approach to how we're going to get there. And I don't think we're going to get there this afternoon. So what I would suggest is that if you can work on that and also bring Mr. Moon into your conversation.
Absolutely.
As well as Ms. Keys-Gamara, because it is really important to this whole board to see that happen. So with that, Mr. Moon?
There I am done. Thank you.
Okay, so nice segue to Ms. Keys-Gamara, followed by Ms. Palchek and Ms. McLaughlin.
And she knew I was going to add on to that. I will just try to focus on goals within that. I'm looking at page 16, aspirational statement, the diversity of hired teachers will match the diversity of qualified teacher applicants. And I know, for example, and I'm just throwing this out, meaning no negative terms, but I know GMU is one of the, you know, schools with high numbers of teachers that we hire from. However, I'm not sure that I see the level of diversity at GMU that we would, are talking about here today. And so I hear you saying that there are steps to, to do some outreach, but I think it, it really, you know, when we start talking about the number of qualified teacher applicants, that can be defined in a number of ways. And so I would be looking for some clarification, because if you go to GMU, it means one thing. If you go someplace else, it means, you know, something totally different. I think you get it, but I'm asking for clarity in the language. The other thing that I'm concerned about, and I think Mr. Moon is correct with respect to the overall raw numbers of African American teachers, but I think what we'll find if we dig into those numbers is that where you have diversity in the leadership in the school is where you have diversity in the school. But you can go to a number of schools and find very little diversity. And that goes to how we're doing business. So I understand that all of these are aspirational, but I, I would hope that we would be focused on the underlying problems that are, that are, have gotten us where we are. Let's just let me look at my notes. Okay, so I'm, I, I really continue to look for in these aspirational goals, and I know we're going to be talking about discipline, and I don't think absences and truancy and that sort of thing, but in these aspirational goals, I'm wondering if there should be something addressing those issues that we know are hindrances to achieving these goals? Just something to think about, because I, I just, this kind of ignores the elephant in the room. Although this is great work, there's, it's always attached in many instances to some of these issues that, that I'm mentioning. So I would say overall, we need to look at defining the targets more accurately. And I agree with Ms. Schultz, we need to have a greater big breakdown of some special education students in particular, and how the, the growth, how we're going to be identifying their growth. And I think that's it.
Ms. Palchek followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. And again, I think I'm echoing, A, really good work forward, and B, some of what I'm hearing from my colleagues. And I'll try to put in the words, I think what I was most shocked to see here is that we have the subgroup breakdown or breakout of more on the discipline, negative reinforcement side of the equation. And I didn't see that breakdown or breakout of numbers when I'm looking at, for me, the number one thing that was, I was asking was the culture. So when we're talking about building assets, when we're talking about, you know, diversity of workforce, but really getting at, I mean, for most of these, I don't see, I was trying to find ones, I don't have it printed, but I was trying to find ones where I see a breakout of the youth survey reports or the engagement surveys of the positive things we're trying to build and the culture we're trying to change. Because in some ways, I agree with you, Dr. Nixon. I only applied at schools where I taught because they had a committed effort for diversity, inclusion, and a mission statement. And, and if not there, they had at least a program building a more diverse teaching staff and community. And whether it's having the data so we can see, is it because of who's in leadership? And does that make the difference? Or do we say, okay, well, that's where we come in, and we look at hiring practices, we look at the school culture, and we look at what's attracting people to even apply in the first place, right? Because I think that's what we're getting at, is how do we get staff? Yes, some of it we don't have control over, I agree with you, but some of it we do have control over. And I think, maybe I'm channeling this frustration, if we've been talking about this for a while. And there are very beautiful talking points, Mr. Smith, and there are a lot of things I know we're doing. But I guess, just like hearing Ms. Heinz before, we're getting frustrated with our numbers, it's getting frustrated with, A, the information we're showing, that we're, we're really breaking it down, as I said again, on the, on the negative side, the discipline, and we're not showing where we're failing and needing to make higher targets. Because if we set them here, at least we'll get here, right? So setting these higher targets of what we need to change in our buildings, how many walkthroughs we need to do in our schools, how, you know, what we need to look at that's keeping students, the staff, from across every subgroup and targeting ones where we need to make a difference to get there, to get there in Goal One, to get there in Goal Two, Three, and Four. So I guess that's sort of an overall question and frustration I have is how do we get there? And, and the follow-on is, I guess I would like to know, as my other question looking at this, is what has been the role and the input of community groups, employee groups, other stakeholders as we looked at and decided the measures and the targets that we are going to use? So I guess those are my kind of two big questions, I'm not going to go into finite details right now.
So I think overall, and we provided the board some information on the groups that we've reached out to, to look at developing the plan. We've worked with our associations, we've worked with the PTA, we've done focus groups so that we can get a better sense of, of what the issues are. I think that as you've looked at how we've developed those targets, we've based a lot of that on trend data and baseline data, looking at where we've been, and then trying to set those attainable targets moving forward. So in terms of, you know, taking our, our targets, and you'll have to help me, Leedy, in terms of the target information and taking that back to those groups, I know that we've taken it to some groups.
We took something that had some of the information on it, but the most recent version of it, we haven't gone back out yet to do that.
Yeah, so, so in terms of setting those targets, the, the final targets that you see here, we haven't done that with all of our groups, but we did get that input as we looked at creating those desired outcomes, creating the areas of importance, creating our, our aspirational statements, so that we had a direction and knew which direction to go. But again, a lot of that's been based on our overall trend data and then trying to set targets that we felt were attainable. When you look at the, the data on page 15 around the aspirational statements for the positive relationships with peers, for social, healthy socio-emotional skills, it's really taking a look at how that information is disaggregated in the youth survey and how we can provide that. And I'm not sure if we're able to do that.
So one of the things with the youth survey is it's an anonymous survey. So while we do collect some demographic information, so some of these could be split out into some groups, we would not be able to split it out into all the groups that we do for student success. So there is a possibility of splitting out some of it, and it would be self-reported information from the students themselves with probably somewhat differing information than what we have in our student information system.
Leedy, nothing's stopping us, though, from beginning to ask for that information going forward as part, if this is part of our strategic plan and the board wants to see that kind of detail.
We can, we definitely already asked students' race, but again, it's their self-reported race, which may or may not match what we have. But yes, we can ask, as you said, we can add things and work with the county to add in additional information if that's what's wanted moving forward.
We do that and work very closely with the county on an annual basis, looking at the items in the survey.
But you know, this is just a great example of, this is a strategic plan, we've done the youth survey for what, fifteen years? Now you're starting to say, how do we drive that survey to get at the stuff that we want to get better? So, I mean, you know, we have what we have, and we can start to refine it more detail to make sure we're getting the information that the board wants to report out how kids really are doing.
Right. I just don't know, to me, it's not useful without having more of a breakout of what's happening. I know some of our regions are sort of aggregating their own culture score for their schools. So I guess it's, it's, it's really how, it's a number two goal, right? And to me personally, I don't, my colleagues might agree or disagree, the data that's being presented is a little bit too broad to feel very useful. That, I guess that's all. So I don't want questions to keep kids from answering the survey, but I would like to know, I assume there has to be a way, I don't know, Ms. Johnson, if there's a way we can do this that can give us more detailed information.
We would definitely have to work with the county, because they are our partners and really the lead with the youth survey. And it is, again, data that we compare nationally. So I really am looking to Dr. Panarelli over there, and I think it would take some work with the county. So I don't want to give a hundred percent commitment that it's a possibility.
Well, if it's not, I guess where I'm getting at is we need to find an alternative way to gather this data.
We can certainly explore that. I do think we have some challenges, keeping in mind that some of what's been requested are really have been board-directed over the course of the last year and what's been included. So we certainly can have some conversation about it.
Okay. I appreciate that. And then, I don't know if this can be a next step, but I, I would appreciate maybe more detailed information as to what has been sort of the timeline and the different stages of input with our stakeholders, just to get a sense of what has and hasn't happened. If we could get that, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pouchek. Ms. McLaughlin, and then we have a couple of go-bags.
So at a macro level, for goals two, three, and four, and it really would apply to one as well, I just want to make sure that in addition to how this is all set up, which is the aspirational statement, the metric, that we're really also looking at, what is the analysis that's going to be done? So this is the plan, but I want to make sure we're all on the same page, that it would be my expectation that there's going to be analysis, because metrics just say, okay, here's our aspirational goal, and here's a metric that shows us how do we get there. But the board and the public needs to know, what was the actual interventions? So what did you actually do to try and achieve these targeted goals? And then what was the analysis of how come we didn't get as far as we wanted to based on the interventions and the actions that we took? So I just want to make sure that.
And that's part of the reporting process? I'm sorry, that's part of the reporting process. So these are the targets, this is the baseline data. As we look at how to report, we're going to talk about those action plans that we put in place to actually achieve these targets, and then provide the analysis of, then so what do we do with these data? I think that when we look at the AAP data, when we look at some other student data that have caused board members to kind of wonder about the data, it's not that we just give it to you and say, well, this is what they are, we didn't meet our target, or we didn't meet our target, now let's move on. It's, this is what they are, now how are we going to put our heads together to figure out how to make this better? What's some analysis of perhaps benchmarking with what other school systems do, providing you some information on what, where we've seen success, where we've applied additional resources, or where we've seen success when different leaders have put different programs or strategies in place? I think there are opportunities for us, and that would be part of that reporting process, so that you wouldn't just get whether or not we hit the target, but that you would see some analysis of, then what's the board's work around this information now that we've provided it to you? And we've heard that, we've heard that loudly and clearly from you, Ms. McLaughlin, over the years. And so we're, we're very intentional about the discussions we're having about the type of analysis that the board is looking for. And we feel that that analysis will drive the decision-making, and that you can use this to leverage the decisions that the board makes. We can use the strategic plan and the data to leverage our decisions as staff. We leverage those decisions as, as a team together, and then are able to go out to our community, explain why we're moving forward in the way that we are.
I appreciate that. Again, not to overcomplicate this, but when you gave the summary, the piece wasn't just the analysis of, so, you know, did we hit our targets, yes or no? But it is making sure that incorporates what action was taken to hit the target, and then what new actions may be taken to help improve our ability to hit the target. And I think Ms. Keys-Gamara really captured what I was thinking, and it, and it, I want to draw special attention to one of the metrics, which is the Fairfax County Youth Survey. A lot of times, we're referencing that as the metric. But again, right now, we don't know what's going to be the actual intervention or action to move the needle, based on what the student responses will be. So I just want, I wanted to prevent staff and superintendent from bringing us a report where, once again, I'll be saying, but what did you actually do so we can appreciate the effort? So I think you.
That's tied to our action plans, and so we'll be reporting out a bit to the board on, these are the action plans that we created, this is the work that we did to get there. And then if, it also ties into the goal floor report with the strategic decision-making cycle. If we go through the cycle and find that we didn't reach our desired outcomes, then what are we going to do to change course to get there?
The second point I wanted to address, which is the premier workforce, that there's been a lot of discussion about. But one of the things that went to my mind is, as a social worker, and having a twin sister who's a nurse, and several family members who are teachers, we know that they tend to be predominantly female professions. So even just going to our statistics we have now and our metrics on where we are in terms of gender applicants and gender hiring, and wanting it to be more reflective of our population, we, we have to be mindful that what is within this school system's control, even the national school division's control, of who decides and elects to pursue a career in this field? So in terms of teachers, when we set these targets, one of the things that I wanted to better understand is, what percentage of, like, what's the gender distribution of young people graduating from our top ten university feeders into our hiring practices for, for brand-new teachers? What, what is that demographic makeup? Because while it would be nice to have our teacher population by gender reflect what our population is in Fairfax County, I don't know that that's reasonable in terms of what the pipeline is of the gender who's even in the profession, who's gone through the teacher training. And in the end, I will say, as the mother of three boys, I don't need them taught by male teachers, I need them being taught by the best teachers. And so I think there are exceptional male teachers out there, and if we can hire them, that's fantastic. But I, I don't, I'm not as wrapped up on my, my sons having had a male teacher. I'm more about, do we continue to track the best and brightest to come in and educate our kids? So with that in mind, I would have the humble request to Superintendent Braybrand that when we're looking at this metrics and, and doing this action plan, I do want to understand whether it's GMU, JMU, UVA, which is three of the education schools I can think of off the top of my head. First of all, I want you to tell us, who are our top feeders? Who, who, where are we drawing them from? Because I just learned the other day, we don't have a relationship for the practicum of the Currie School of Education, for students to do student teaching here. So we have a Fairfax, we have a Fairfax County employee whose child is at UVA Currie School, wants to do a practicum here, and she's told UVA doesn't have the placement with us. But they do have it with Arlington and Falls Church and others. And so I was going to follow up with Helen Nixon on that, but that, but that's an example of when you talk about pipeline, who's coming in, well, who are we, who are we using? But, you know, I used gender because it also goes across for all of our subgroups where we're talking about wanting to see who we're hiring and how it's reflective of, of our population. Another example is what percentage of students in these schools, in these schools of education are of Asian descent? And so, and then also keep in mind, when we talked about wanting our population to reflect our county's diversity, well, nationally, Asians make up about six percent of the US population. In Fairfax County, Mr. Moon, I believe it's twenty or twenty-two percent? So if we're, again, trying to hire from outside of this county, those schools may not even have twenty-two percent of Asian students in education applying. So I feel like we set some targets based on the, the microcosm or the bubble of this is what Fairfax County is, but our hiring is actually both the Commonwealth of Virginia and even outside of the state. And so I guess, Dr. Braybrand, I would say, I would hope some of the way we set realistic targets are, what's the pool look like, both?
The, the tension on this one is, what we've given you short-term for two years is, is trying to hire to the pool that we have. And the tension is that Fairfax County is an incredibly diverse system, and part of what we have to do is, is changed, fundamentally change the composition of the pool itself to get historical groups who have not participated in education careers to get in. Part of the answer is going to be through growing our own. We are going to be the best place to answer and bring our own people to come. And, and it's surprising as you go to schools to find out how many people really are from Fairfax County that are in. But I don't know that we have been as targeted about trying to focus on specific groups of Fairfax County kids that are underrepresented in the labor pool to get into education. So we're going to have to do it. And it's not a, it's not in one year, all of a sudden, we're going to have, I mean, every school district worth its salt is out trying to hire Asian and Latino and African-American. Frankly, when I was in another school district, we had schools, schools that have high numbers of underrepresented teachers were simply calling us and saying, don't even come. They're already going to go, I mean, I'm just telling you, they're already going to go to Northern Virginia, they're going to go to New York. They're not even going to, don't even waste your time in your city, no one's coming to your place. I mean, I'm just, I hate to say it, but that's how it was said. So we're in a better place than others to leverage it, and we've got to make our own, we've got to bend our own needle by the work that we do, too. And part of it is saying to our communities where kids haven't gone into education, that this is a worthwhile career, it's a respected career, and it's a career you can make a living in. And that's back to our market-based compensation for teachers, and retire and live here and be in the community. But we'll work on it. We heard your feedback today, and there's, look, if you didn't have a strategic plan worth, the, one of, to me, the best markers of a strategic plan is, you're in it. And it's starting to make you think about what policy you want to see, what programs you want to change. That's a plan that's alive. You can have a plan that sits on a, you know, space out in the internet or on a bookshelf, and it sounds cute, but it's not driving what board decisions are. I feel like you all are getting doubled down, invested in what this would be, and I think it's going to make accountability to me and our staff stronger, and frankly, to you all. How are we going to make our decisions? What are we really going to decide? I'm going to, I feel like I'm going to get clear direction, and am getting clear direction from you based on the presentation of this plan today.
Well, I, I appreciate that. I guess what I'm, I'm trying to do is set a little bit of expectation, at least for me as one board member, which is that I, I want to make sure that as we're then setting up our action plan, our action plan is set within some very concrete and specific steps that can be taken. And one of them is to understand the landscape
Right.
of what we're looking at in terms of who's, who's graduating and going into the field of teaching.
We've, we have those discussions on a, on a regular basis about who's graduating, who's coming out of programs. And you look at, at historically black colleges and universities, the percentage of individuals going into the field of education is extremely low. And so we understand that going into the gate, as we're thinking about increasing the diversity of that pool. You know, where are we going to get students? Helen shared with, with a few folks just, just last week, some of her efforts of going and going out to churches and meeting with parent groups, and talking with parents about the importance of encouraging your children to go into fields of education, and not waiting until we look at their senior year to see whether or not they want to come into Fairfax. But having that outreach on the front end to encourage people to, to look at education as a career. So, so that's part of the work, it will be part of the action plans, and we can bring that work back as we report out to the board.
But a nugget you gave me, Megan, that I haven't talked with Helen Marty about. Who are our top ten universities? What is the composition of their current pool for teachers? And are we beating or meeting that, that composition of their pool to the composition of ours? Like, are we, are we hiring, if their percentage of Asians is twenty percent, are we getting twenty percent of those folks to Fairfax County, right? Because I think we're a county that could start to become a beacon to say, for all these groups, everybody, everybody who is a strong teacher wants to be in Fairfax, whether you're a Latino teacher, a male teacher, an Asian teacher, a white teacher. And we can get the pull of those folks that will want to come here. And I think that maybe historically has been one of the issues, have we had that reputation that we want and are committed to a diverse workforce?
Right. I just, to make, put a fine point on it, my, my son, who was a freshman in college, it came down to looking at UVA and Penn. And he looked at UVA for the Currie School of Education, he was the only boy in the room. He was surrounded by all girls, he was the only boy in the room. Now, I don't know what the Currie School of Education demographics are, but that particular day, it didn't look like any young men were going into teaching. That's my point about today's conversation, is we as a board have to understand, what is the landscape of undergraduate students in schools of education who are getting certified to teach and graduating and wanting to come into the field? Because that, to me, is how we should have been setting our targets and looking at it as, as one key factor. So thank you, Dr. Braybrand, for hearing me on that.
And I know, I know, we want to move on. I just want to say this to you. Two years ago, I was in another place, we called UVA math, hey, we need math teachers. They said, Scott, we have seven math teachers certified graduating from the Currie School, seven. Three are going to New York, three are going to Northern Virginia, one's going to Virginia Beach, forget about it. Seven at the University of Virginia. Steve Staples, the state superintendent, said, they've been tracking Virginia public schools teacher candidates, excuse me, Virginia colleges teacher candidates, has been dropping like a rock. It's a crisis. The teacher shortage is real, and we're going to have to figure out how to reverse it, or we're not going to have the teaching force that we need for Fairfax in another five or 10 years.
So I have some good news for you. I'm on the advisory board for the School of Education at Boston University, and this year was the first year in about 10 years where the number of students applying to the School of Education was actually going up substantially. So hopefully, that's a trend that we're seeing everywhere. Having said that, trying to get us back on schedule, I do want to add a little bit on the metrics on our hiring pool. One of the things that I think is important is, this is great across the board, but we actually have to drill down to the building-by-building level. Because I think what you'll see in the building-by-building level is a difference depending on what the strategic focus of that building is. And I think that if we put a building-by-building metric into our plan, then we will send a very strong message to all of our building leaders that we are serious about having a robust, diverse workforce. And so if I could urge you to do that, I'd appreciate it. And now I'm going to turn it over for the last word, Ms. Keys-Gamara, and then we're going to go to next steps.
This is going to be really quick, and I was on the same wavelength. I do think we need to be more specific about our goals. Because as I look at, for example, on page 10, the how is increased school and department awareness and use of practices to support positive individual wellness? I think the words "and demonstrate proficiency" somehow need to be there. Because sometimes you can read a book or go through a video or whatever. It doesn't mean that somehow we are showing that we got the point and we're putting those things into practice. Similarly, I'd like to back into a goal with respect to hiring practices for the same kind of thing. And I don't know exactly where it would go. But we do need to say, not only we, you know, But we do need to say, not only we, you know, um, we're, I, I, basically, I'm trying to come up with a phrase to say that we work on understanding, uh, cultural proficiency and how we deal with, uh, hiring, but we also demonstrate that in our hiring practices. So, I don't know where that can go, but I think demonstration is, is important, because that then becomes something that we can track with respect to da, data.
And with that, um, Ms. Mulberg, do you have any, uh, next steps for us? Sure you do.
And so, as the next steps are coming up, we know that this is slated currently for a vote on Monday at the board table. And so, as we think about next steps, that I would want that to be in the forefront of our board's, uh, decision-making as we move forward.
So, as we go through them, if people could say, "This is essential for my, um, decision on Monday," or "This can be something that gets built into the action plans for a given measure." Okay? So, the first one, Ms. Hines.
I think probably what I was talking about more was to integrate data on project momentum in the, closing the achievement gap framework, not in the strategic plan necessarily, because we refer to, right, we link to the, the CAG, and so, it should be in there, that's all. And it sounds like you're working on that anyway.
Yes.
Okay. The second one, Mr. Moon. You're fine, and do you need that by Monday, or are you?
If they can get the data by Monday, that is fine. If not, uh, I can take an intelligent guess at this.
Okay. Ms. Schultz, for yours?
And, and you're a very intelligent man, Mr. Moon.
I, I don't.
I need more, I need more sleep.
Um, I don't think it was the, uh, number
Know what that is?
Number three is fine. Number four, it's not everyone will be proficient in reading and math. Um, no, it's just removing the last bullet. It's, um, I have to get to
If I remember correctly, Ms. Schultz, it was to move the proficiency of, um, English-language learners
To, to, to a sub-goal.
to be integrated, to a sub-goal. Is that correct?
Yes.
Can we get that accomplished by Monday, folks? And do people support that?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the next one, Ms. Schultz.
Yeah, I don't want to pass anything that says a passing grade.
We can do that.
Yeah. Why don't we just put Monday on the ones that we have to have done by Monday? Okay?
Three, four, and five are Monday.
We can add the language, but we wouldn't be able to pull the data together.
That's fine.
Yes, so, we can provide the, as long as we know the directions right, then we can do that and then provide the data later.
Yep.
Can we just look at that and not say Monday and then come up with something for elementary? Because we had middle and high.
And, and we currently have, uh, success for reading and math, and that's one metric is SOLs. We could create an additional metric under success for reading and math that focuses on third grade. Yeah. So, we, we can just include that as a separate metric
Yes.
and how we report out.
The next one is mine, but it's long-term.
Okay, so, number nine. That's not, I mean, we could try that, but let's be realistic. That's not realistic, right? And so, I think really what we need to do about that is to develop, uh, a, an alternative way of challenging every kid, um, that is different from what we've been doing and that doesn't carry all the risks that we know after decades, are just inherent in the AAP program that we have. So, um, we can, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't know what that number, that, that common metric would be, anyway.
So, Ms.
Because the whole idea that there are a certain percentage of kids who are, you know, above a certain intelligence, I mean, we, we don't even know how to measure that, is the truth, but.
So, that seems to be something that is different than targeted metrics. It's actually, you want a comprehensive plan on how to, how to realize the advanced academic needs of all subgroups.
I suppose, yes. And I, I've, I've had a good conversation with Scott about this, and, um, I, I, you know, I, I, I trust that staff is talking about what we could do. I mean, I think we've had Pedro Noguera out to the leadership conference two years in a row now, and he wrote the book Excellence Through Equity. He's all about finding a way to meet needs with challenging curriculum and integrated classrooms. There are much better models than what we do. It's a big change, but if we're going to sell it, as you say, not to staff, but to the community and the board, right? Because this is our sale to make to the community more than yours. It has to be a, a plan that we can get behind, and it's not going to be in the next steps here. So, all I, my, my comment was more along those lines, and I, I appreciate, Scott, I'm, I'm not, I, I'm not aggravated with anybody other than the decades of people who have come before us.
Honestly, I'd rather have language that Karen's talking about, so that it's on the work session noted that you want to see that. Look, when we did the equity profile last year, the board told us two areas, Francisco brought like 17 items. You said discipline, which we're doing tonight, we're doing in January, we're doing in June, and you said advanced academics program. So, developing an equity plan around advanced academics
Developing, I would, right, I would say even stronger than that, I would, would say develop an alternative and equitable approach to meeting advanced academic needs.
I'm not sure that you're going to get full buy-in on the term "alternative." I would suggest that you say, "Develop an, a intentional plan for ensuring that all subgroups have access or equity, equitable access to advanced academics."
Okay, I don't, I don't think we're going to get there, because I'm not buying that. This is about, this is about integrating classrooms as well, you know? This is about another approach to doing it. So, you know, my, my complaint stands, um, if, if that box, if that graph still looks like that, I can't support the plan, but I'm just one vote. And, you know, I, I will continue to work, uh, on the side, okay? Because I, I really don't think that we're going to find an answer here that I can live with. I mean, what I, what I would want up there is, let's, um, you know, let's direct the superintendent to develop an alternative approach to advanced, meeting advanced academic needs that is equitable.
So, is that something as, we can do here? Apparently, it's not being worked on, or is this a kind of a forum topic? Because I would support that, but I'm trying to figure out where we are.
It's bigger than what we're doing.
Right.
It's bigger. I think it deserves a fuller discussion, and I'd be willing to try to find time where we could have a fuller discussion on our, uh, work sessions, but I don't think that as a next step, saying that we're going to have an alternative to AAP programs in five minutes of discussion is really fair to
I agree.
the thousands of students who benefit from those programs today.
Well, it's also not fair to the conversation.
Yeah.
My, my question, Ms. Hines, can we, is it reasonable to ask for more aggressive numbers? And that, I guess that would have been my question, is, it's pretty low. I think some research has shown that having higher objectives will at least get you farther than you are. So, i, is it reasonable to take a second look for staff to?
And so, Ms. Palchek, that was what I was trying to get to in 10, and so, if you want to just modify 10, because I was looking at more aggressive, um, objectives in the medium term, not long term. I want it closer in.
Well, in our 18, 20 term. Right, that's what we're looking at. So, my question is, can that one be more aggressive?
Um.
And then the next one? I don't know how we come up with the next one.
I mean, you could, you guys can adjust that language. You say "medium term," if you want to define whether you're talking next year, the year after.
So, and, and as we talked about adjusting to give a little more time for certain groups that were further away from the target, uh, this is one of those targets that we adjusted, because we did know that we needed, based on previous trend data, to expect that we were going to see a large gain, and we've been flat with no gains. Uh, i, it's trying to balance where we're going and where we've been. So, we could certainly take away the, the five-point, uh, target drop here to give a higher target for this particular goal area. It's just a matter of resourcing to, to actually help us get there and, and figuring out the plan for getting there. So, um, I, I just wanted to be clear, as we talked about some of those target areas where we're further from the, the end aspiration, that we realize that, that for some areas we may need to give, uh, students more time, but we can certainly take a different look at that.
Yeah, I, I want to follow, because, for example, I know it's not, you know, middle school programs, honors programs, I know specific students who are encouraged to go from none to all and have succeeded, right? So, I guess that's the question, is some of it is just, you know, being that person that says, "Yes, you can do this," and, and making sure the students are taking those courses. So, maybe that, I don't know where we go before Monday, but that's what I'm thinking for more aggressive in the short term.
We can bring something back and, and share with the board, uh, as we post for Monday with a different, uh, target.
Maybe, maybe what we need to do in 10 is to show more aggressive targets in the medium, near and medium term. Does that make sense? And you can certainly put Ms. Palchek's, um,
No, I can support that. Names come off later.
I know, but I just.
Teamwork.
Mr. Moon, are you fine with the next one? Does that need to be done by Monday? I'm just, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. We were so excited about this subject.
It is being done, though, Ms., Ms., it is part of what we're doing, so, that's actually why the equity profile has not come out yet. We want to connect it to this work, so, but it's absolutely going to be aligned to that. Not by Monday.
Okay. Um, 12. Ms. Palchek?
Can we go back? I'm, I'm sorry, Karen, on 10, can we just go back for a second? That is for Monday, the more aggressive targets near midterm. Marty said we could do it Monday. Can someone just put Monday for that one, please? Number 10.
Yes, we can do that Monday.
Thank you.
Sorry, quick question on that. Here, we're talking basically grades three through 12, correct?
Correct.
Or no? This is just AAP, not APIB? Is this AAP
This was just A, A-
and middle school honors, or?
This metric was just AAP, and it was grades three through, um, through eight.
Okay. Three through eight. Perfect. Thank you.
And then there's a separate one for honors and a separate one for APIB.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, number 12, Ms. Palchek.
Yeah, I get the questions from staff. You know, how feasible, how much of this do you already have? And how easy is it to just, to share what you've done so far in the process?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, thank you. So,
12 can be done by Monday.
13, is there any data we have already that can be shared, understanding it's self-reported?
As, from the youth survey, and not from the youth survey, the youth survey data is what it is. Mary Ann?
Yes.
We have that. But we don't have breakout by students with disabilities, English-language learners.
Right, we have gender and ethnicity.
You have gender and ethnicity. Okay, I would love to see that.
Self-reported.
And, and grade, grade levels, well, right?
And grade level.
Okay, I would love to see that. Thank you.
We have it for some items, when they're individual items, but some of the metrics are not individual items, and we will not be able to have that by Monday.
Can you explain?
Um, the ones about being drug-free, for example, the youth survey has a long list of various alcohol and drugs that students might say they have taken, and so, in that particular instance, it's not an individual item. It's a kind of conglomeration of all the items.
For the assets, do you have that? Are those considered separate?
That's also a grouped one.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin.
So, for 14, information that, yeah, universities, UVA's, teachers come from in the list that we work with for student teachers. Yeah, I mean, I think you understand information we're talking about, demographic information.
We can get that information. We've, we were looking at that as we had a previous target to look at the, uh, data from the diversity among our, our colleges and universities in Virginia. So, that was a previous target. We shifted it to this, uh, so we can see if we can provide that.
Yeah, so, Ms. Mulberg, I'd like to say, "Provide demographic information," and I'd like to have it say the top 10. Yeah, or to, top 15 feeder universities? I just want to know what our, our, yeah, top 15 feeder universities. I mean, you guys, obviously, if it turns out, there's just such a break in number 15, it's like you get five a year, I, I, but where, we can see where we're getting our heaviest numbers. I do have two bullets that didn't show up. One in, in particular, as you know, I had asked the information about, um, the participation rate in A, of AAP stu, the, no, there's the AAP participation rates for the total student population. You know what I'm saying? Like, we had it all broken out by subgroups.
Yeah, so, we've got that here. We're, to add an "all" column for participation rates for advanced academics and participation rates for, uh, Algebra I, so we have the "all" and then broken out by Asian, Black, Hispanic, White, so we can do that.
Okay, and then, um,
That by Monday, Ms. McLaughlin?
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's a one number.
We can do that.
Just sticking with the same approach
You can do it by Monday.
we've taken, okay?
That's fine. Um, and the other one had to do with the, um, metric on the capstone projects. The report says that, uh, and this is not for Monday. The report says that, and this is not for Monday, but it mentions in here that, on the metric will be percentage of students with a passing grade on a Capstone project. A, I'd like to understand, are we talking about kindergarteners who are doing Capstone projects? If not, I think we need to have a little bit of clarity there, because the public may read that in the, I mean, we're voting on it, but we need to make sure what, what's, they, they could, but also, I'll bring everybody's attention to, because it's under development. So, again, this is not for Monday, but I want, I do want the information back. Says the metric on Capstone projects is currently being developed, and to date, we have 30 schools that have piloted the Capstone project. So, as a next step, I would like for the board to receive, what are those 30 schools, and what grade level do they cover? How's that? Okay.
And Ms...
I'm sorry, one process question. I've shared with staff before that I have a little bit of heartburn on some of the language we use under caring culture and, you know, helping our students and staff make healthy choices. So, since I'm told we're going to vote on this thing, if I consult with staff and say, I think we just need to word this to be a little more accurate on what we're doing, am I allowed to bring an amendment for the board's consideration to just make the language what I think would be a little more... Okay, thank you.
But, Ms. McLaughlin, knowing that the board... Yes, please, thank you. By Wednesday. She's working on the language, she hasn't decided on it yet. Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Yeah, I, I think, I think at the end, I mentioned that I was looking for more actual measurable metrics with respect to demonstrating proficiency, one in the area of our hiring practices, because I think we're trying to have cultural proficiency and achieve those goals within the particular groups. So, if you could just look at ways to include not just that we will achieve the goals, but the understanding that goes with it, so that it's actually demonstrated. In terms of the caring culture, I think it's on page 10, on the "How," it says, increase school and department awareness, and blah, blah, blah. There's an awareness, and then there's a demonstrated awareness. And I'm looking for ways to show the demonstration of those things.
And so, one thing that might be helpful, as we look at the premier workforce presentation that's coming, we know that earlier this last year, we changed our hiring practices for this school year. And so, as we look at the November 1st data, we're going to be providing the board an update on the current diversity based on some of the changes that we've made. And so, is that something that, as we put it in this next premier workforce report that's coming in January, would that satisfy...
No, because what I'm looking for is people understanding that we're not just looking for, this is our goal, but we're looking for, I, I think somebody said, targets for each school, right? So, how are we demonstrating this particular understanding, right? There's a difference between, oh, I have this target, but then I go through the training, and I'm actually putting, implementing practices that show that I'm proficient in that area. That's the distinction I'm looking for.
Okay, so, the number of schools that are actively implementing.
And Ms. Keys-Gamara, do you need that by Monday, or is that something that can be as part of an intentional plan?
I'm looking for some changed language in what we have, correct?
Okay.
Does that make sense? I can come and talk to you, but I...
Yeah, I'd, I'd love to be able to spend a little more time with, with staff and you on that and get it right, instead of rushing and throwing something together Monday that's not quite right.
But, I, I will say for you, this is what's missing to me.
Okay.
Okay?
So, are you looking to put forth your own amendment, or are you asking for them to come back with...
However they need me to do it. I'm happy, we can talk.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. So, ladies and gentlemen, this has been a very robust discussion. We have two additional items on our agenda today, but we do have space on the December 4th, evening of December 4th, when we are having our students come in, or when we're, I'm sorry, our leadership cohort. And so, I'm going to suggest that we take the resource stewardship presentation off of today's agenda and move that to December 4th, and then focus the rest of our activities to this evening on the discipline.
If I could just ask, I think we're supposed to be voting on the resource stewardship report on Monday at our regular meeting, isn't that right? So, we just postpone that as well?
We'll postpone that, yes, ma'am. So, if that's agreeable to everybody, let's take a five-minute break, and at, actually, let's take a 10-minute break, and at five minutes to five...
I would have done it the opposite.
We will do.
I would have done it the opposite, just because I think the discipline, we're at the end of the day, and the discipline discussion is going to require a lot more energy and a lot more evaluation.
I understand that, but Ms. Keys-Gamara, on the 4th, we are going to be at the end of the day as well. And so, it's an evening session. And so, what I would suggest, since we've got people here in the audience, and we've had people waiting...